Call the meeting to order?
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No speakers today?
No speakers.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Here.
Ms. Nywer?
Here.
Ms. Fabrega?
Here.
Ms. McBride?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Colonel Baird?
Any special guests there?
No.
They're pretty special, but they're not guests.
We had a lot in the executive session, yes. So, on the report of the superintendent.
Yes.
We start with 5A, which is a new policy, basically RSA, typical legislative action. They have replaced the RSA, which is a reading sufficiency act, with the strong readers act. We really didn't have to change anything we're doing. We just had to change the name of it and therefore change the policy, so we need approval.
We need approval.
Make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Fabrega?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Gifted education plan, obviously, we got to, the board has to approve that once a year.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Fabrega?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
We still have time on this, but we do have the tentative board meeting dates that we can go ahead and approve that match up with what we did this year. Obviously, as you know, as long as we do it 10 days out, we can adjust those as we go.
Okay. Motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Fabrega?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And then everybody's favorite, Christmas bonus. We have done a better job. We moved it up. We had been approving it in October, but if you remember, the last couple of years, we put a few stipulations about people who don't come to work or who miss an extreme amount of work onto whether they qualify or not for it, because it's kind of not fair to get a full bonus when you're already, you've been to work, you've missed more days than you came. So can we just get approval of the employee bonus recommended?
I make the motion, we approve the employee bonus.
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Fabrega?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
That's a sanctioning, isn't it?
Yep, she told me.
I was going to wait a minute.
We need to approve the sanctioning applications.
Motion to approve, second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Fabrega?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
All right.
We've done the employee bonus recommendations. Again, congratulations, and guys, I'm just telling you, our staff really appreciates that. Appreciate you guys doing it. It's really a good thing for them. The ACT and College Radiance reported this there to report. I'm going to tell you that those numbers, the numbers are never what we're happy with. Our dropout rate is getting better as we do some, there's still some paperwork areas, so if you get an actual dropout rate, it's a whole lot better than what some of our reports show that you may see, because we still get hung up when our kids move out of state, which we have more than the norm of kids who move out of state and how that processes in our, and sometimes if there's a void there, when we started the next, when we have two years, calendar years going at a time, they kind of get caught in that void if they move out in that time, and then they end up a dropout, and the state's not very good about letting you clean that up after you catch it. And they're getting better, so, but it is a...
Scores did go down a little bit.
It is a, it is a huge point of emphasis for ed services is to try to get our test scores up across the district and start talking more about what we can do to get them up. You know, it's kind of that deal where we can sit around and talk about why, and we can say, we have this, we have this, we have this, we have auto mobility, we have high poverty, but we have a saying since the day you guys hired me, you don't have to be bad to get better, we have to get better. And so that's just a big talk we have.
I assume we're really working on math.
Yes, across the district. And that is one thing that's helped, and it just takes it a while to get it up into ACT, but Lisa Sparks, who is our executive director of elementary, was an elementary math teacher, so we've put more math into elementaries, and she's got more emphasis on it than we've had in the past. So, moving on to the information items, you have your ed services, your communications, and your business operations updates, and...
Nothing else?
Nothing else.
Anything that anyone needs removed from the consent agenda? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Who seconded it?
Oh, second.
They mumbled it, too.
Okay.
I can't mumble it, I'm sorry.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Fabrega?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And we do need executive session.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer? Yes. Ms. Fabrega?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yeah.
Ms. Fabrega?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yeah.
All right, we are going to be back. First, we have to acknowledge return.
Right, right here.
Yeah.
Read the message.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's right there. The Board of Education went into executive session at 5:05 PM. Members present were Carla Cogfelter, Patty Nyworth, Alyssa Fabrega, Amanda McBride, and Zeldon Rice. Others present included Kevin Heim, Superintendent. Items discussed include the employing, promoting, or receiving recognitions of individuals certified and support salary personals listed on the personnel report, and Superintendent Kevin Heim's annual evaluation and/or contract. During the executive session, the board discussed these items and no other items, and no action was taken. The board returned to open session at 5:24 PM. This constitutes the minutes of the executive session.
We have no action on the superintendent's contract. The only thing we have for action is-
Personnel.
Eleven, the personnel report.
I make a motion, we approve the personnel report, both A and B.
I second.
Go ahead. Call the roll. They had two seconds again.
It don't matter.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Ms. Fabrega?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to any new business?
Now ma'am, and due to the fact that we have a fall break, the next meeting is not until the 27th.
October 27th at 5:00.
But we have a regional meeting.
We have a regional Tuesday.
Tuesday.
All right. Any other board announcements?
And that's at the, that's at the Albert Johnson-
Albert Johnson Conference Center.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And I want to congratulate Lynn's crew and all the bands and choir and orchestra, that was amazing Thursday.
It really was.
That was awesome, so awesome.
And MacArthur is playing a home football game Thursday night at MacArthur.
Oh, they are at their, so they're playing-
And it's their homecoming.
Oh, awesome.
They're playing their homecoming at their home stadium.
Do they have bleachers on both sides?
Yes, they do, yes.
Press box on both sides. We're looking to put in a band bleachers in the end zone so the band kids can sit there, so there's more room, and maybe even a pep club in the end zone, so.
Yeah, I went over and looked at the other ones, I looked, I looked at it.
We've been over there, playing sixth grade games, so I've seen that.
Yeah, I think I saw it in MacArthur, and MacArthur are open, Lautner's the only one.
And they're working on it.
There's a line over it, and it's a-
Still electric.
It's fiber, not electric, it's fiber.
Mm-hmm.
And they've got everybody but one person, and Lance might know who it is, and that's-
Good.
Oh, okay, I thought they had already-
And I hate that, because you don't ever want anyone to think, well, you guys are the last, but everybody's always so-
I told them it was Prairie Dogs' fault, it's all good.
All right.
If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.